Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 11th meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Hutchins if he would like to give the invocation.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Please join us in prayer or reflection as we begin this session of the board. And remembering as we progress through this COVID, all the doctors and nurses that have served so ably. In particular, I want to remember my godfather, Dr. Roberto de Villarreal, with a prayer in his native language of Columbia. That's not the District of Columbia. Padre nuestro, que estás en el cielo, santificado sea tu nombre. Venga y nosotros tu reino agasit, tu voluntad en la tierra como en el cielo. Danos nosotros, pendejada día. Perdona nosotros ofensas como tambien nosotros perdonamos de los que nos defendes, nos dejas carrera en la tentación y liberanos del mar. Et名 de padre, et fili, et spirti, sanctis, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I might add, my godfather is more affectionately known as Dr. V.
Dr. V.
Oh, now we know who you're talking about.
Boy, that's old school.
Oh, yeah, Dr. V. Saw him many times.
So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would ask that we have a motion to move proclamation number three, National Law Enforcement Week, up to under public service announcements sheriff's office award recipients.
Show move.
Second. So, motion to second on the floor that we move National Law Enforcement Week up to public service announcements, number one sheriff's office award recipients. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Thank you. So, Mr. Sheriff, we are at public service announcements and item one is the sheriff's.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We recently had an award ceremony and we had some award recipients we'd like to share with you for... And they were selected because of their diligence of duty, their performance, and the representation of the Calver County Sheriff's Office Detention Center. We'll start with the Rookie of the Year for the Calver County Detention Center, Correctional Deputy Alexander Hart. Come on up. The Correctional Deputy of the Year, Senior Correctional Deputy, Robert Scott. The Rookie of the Year for the Calver County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Herschel Wilder. And the Deputy of the Year, the Calver County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Cameron Parks. They had a couple other awards for Detective of the Beach Deputy of the Year, but they're going into a position where we don't want to show their face, so.
I was gonna say, do you want me to read the proclamation? Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, good morning. All right, and you guys know how much respect we have for the absolute best sheriff's office in the state of Maryland. And we are proud to have you here this morning and we'll read this proclamation for you. It says, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County desires to recognize the dedication of the many men and women who serve in the Calver County Sheriff's Office. And whereas these courageous individuals choose to wear the uniform, selfishly risking their lives in the performance of their duties, serving their communities, knowing the dangers and challenges that encompass their day, as they protect and serve the public with pride and dignity. Whereas peace officers are in the front line in preserving our right to live in a crime-free environment that is all often threatened by insidious fear caused by violence in a community, and numerous men and women presently serve Calver County citizens as guardians of the peace. Whereas the well-being of Calver County citizens is preserved and enhanced as direct result of the diligence and commitment of these law enforcement personnel. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins our nation in recognizing May 11, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of officers killed or disabled in the line of duty. We call upon the citizens of Calver County to pause to remember and pay solemn tribute to those officers who made the ultimate sacrifice, their families who supported them, and fellow officers for their devotion. Be it further proclaimed that may, excuse me, Tuesday, May 11, 2021, be recognized as Law Enforcement Memorial Appreciation Day in Calver County and all citizens should observe this date with the appropriate ceremony and display of respect which these officers have so nobly earned and deserved, given under our hands and seal this 11th day, May 21. Signed by all five county commissioners."
Whatever you want to do, your call, Sheriff.
Hold your breath. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your service. You can take it home free now. How are you? Yes, sir. Congratulations. You know, on a personal note, Mr. President, proud day to see my daughter there. And Zach pitched the whole game yesterday, 198. So, Dad's two for two. Dad's having a good week.
Yeah.
So, on behalf of all the Board of Commissioners, all the citizens of Calver County, we want to thank those ladies and gentlemen for their service to the public and congratulate them on being recommend, uh, recognized for their service, so, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our weekly COVID update with Dr. Folsom.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
That's a hard bill to follow.
You'll be fine.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'm not sure if the updated slides got here, but, okay. Very good. And the little thing here, okay. So, as per routine, we'll go through our typical slides here. So, the Calver County COVID case rate has gone down yet again. We, for the first time in several months, we reached under 100 cases for the past week, which was fantastic. And as you remember, this runs Wednesday to Wednesday. That's our data collection typically, so. You can see here that our positivity rate has now reached almost that elusive 5% mark that the CDC sort of sets for low transmission rates in the community, which is fantastic. If you look at the age distribution of cases, you can see once again that, you know, our over 65 population really is, has minimal burden, illness burden at this point in time. We do have, I'll get to this later, but for hospitalization, there are some over 65. But you can see that there has been an increase in our 36 to 55-year-old age group, which is generally the hardest ones to sort of convince for vaccination as well, so we can see that that has gone up. Thankfully, our children, our youth have continued to go down in terms of their case rate as well.
I think that's gone down, Doc, because you're here. That's just my personal thing. You know, I've just been, you know, it just seems funny coincidence you're here and all of a sudden the rates are down.
You want to send Dr. Polsky some?
Yeah, you know, just observation. Chair would entertain a motion.
We, you can see here, this is the total number of tests run. 1,935 tests were run last week with 99 positives. And you can see our positivity rate of 5.1%. Statewide COVID numbers have gone down yet again. They mentioned that in our local health officer call yesterday. So, unlike 100 deaths about last week, there's 71 deaths for the last week in the state of Maryland. You can see that the current hospitalizations and ICU admissions are also down statewide. I'll just briefly touch upon, I forgot to put the slide in, but currently we have one ICU patient at our local hospital. We actually have one COVID-positive patient on labor and delivery and four ward patients. So, those are our current census as of yesterday. Here's our vaccination summary. So, this is using our total population, which as we know, our total population includes those who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. So, on this slide, you can see that with the current population, we have about 35% of our residents vaccinated. But if you go to the 65 and over vaccine summary, you can see that basically we've got almost 80% of our 65 and over community fully vaccinated. This is our 16 and over vaccine summary, so this does include those people who are eligible for Pfizer vaccination at this point. And that shows that the vaccination rate's at about 44% for all of those age groups combined.
Doctor, with a Pfizer being approved for the younger children.
Yes, yeah. I actually added this slide in first thing this morning because, of course, you know, they came out with the recommendation yesterday after I had gotten the slides to Rachel. But they did come out yesterday, the FDA approved vaccination for 12 to 15-year-olds. It does need to go through one more hurdle, which is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. They're having a meeting tomorrow. It will actually be a live meeting that anyone can watch. So, there's no registration required if people want to watch them discuss the vaccination. They enrolled in this study for Pfizer. They enrolled a little over 2,000 children, 12 to 15 years of age. They randomized them to vaccine or placebo. The placebo cases had about, I think, 16 to 17 cases after they were vaccinated, whereas the group that had been vaccinated had zero cases of COVID after they were vaccinated. So, shows very good efficacy rate. Similar side effects to adults, fever, headaches, body aches, chills, generally lasting one to three days total. If you see longer side effects than that, that usually brings up something else, so. Most people should see their doctor if that's happening. So, we have vaccinated 460 teenagers in the school system. The partnership with the hospital, a big shout out to Cara Herr, who's the pharmacist over at the hospital, helping to coordinate that and the school system. And we got those done last week. Their second dose will come the week of May 24, I believe it is. So, they should be fully vaccinated by the time they graduate and go on to their summer activities. And then we will be coordinating getting links out. Unlike for the teenage age group, we are likely going to send links out through the school system, but for those parents to bring the kids through our drive-through. So, unlike the school system vaccine clinics that we had actually on the premises of the high school, we've chosen that because the parents have to come through anyways and drive their kids through anyways, it's a better option for us to use our drive-through capabilities. And the school system agreed with that. As did several local pediatricians. I actually polled them this weekend to see, you know, what their recommendations would be. And it sounds like most of them at this point still would be happy to send their patients through our drive-through, just based on the organizational level and everything. We do have ample supply, so as soon as we get the green light from the ACIP meeting tomorrow, then MDH gives us the green light. PrepMod, which is the platform, the technology platform that we're required to use, will make a switch and will allow 12 to 15-year-olds to be able to register, be registered. Currently, it is required that they're 16 and over and they can't even get past that point. So, if they're under that age, so, easy switch for technology. And just again, you know, these are all the local and mass vaccination sites. Doctors' offices do not currently have Pfizer vaccination at all. We will work with them in the future if the temperature requirements do change in terms of storage, so that they can get those vaccines in their offices. The other thing that the ACIP will hopefully address tomorrow is co-administration with other vaccines. For most adults, we don't have to worry about that. We're not getting vaccinated every year, every couple of years. For children, when they go for their well visits, they're generally trying to get some vaccines in, right? So, you might need a tetanus booster or you might need a meningitis vaccine. So, the ACIP should hopefully go into that detail. Are we going to need to space them out? Are we going to be able to sort of co-administer them with other vaccines at the well visits? And then, just again, our vaccine registration information, really, everything is public at this point. So, if you go to calvercountycovid19.com, you can see all of our clinics that are planned for the next couple of weeks. And you can click on whichever one makes the most sense for you, coming through time-wise, date-wise, etc. We have had a discussion internally about making them no registration required, which means you can just literally drive up and get your vaccine. We are not there yet. Most of that is because of technological issues, but we are, we're in discussions about that, so that people can just pull up and get vaccinated.
So, what is the technology issue for that?
So, the links have to be, the links, you have to sign up through the computer in order to go to Immunnet. So, Immunnet is the database that houses all of the information. And right now, it's a very difficult option to do something like that onsite. So, you can imagine that there could be backups, there could be delays, and people pull up and then they have to register onsite. So, we're trying to figure out logistically how that would work. You know, would we pull people up and have them park in one area, register, and then come through? That kind of thing.
Because all the mass vac sites are all doing walk-ups.
Yes, yeah.
So, they're used, they figured out somehow to do it.
Yeah, and I think with our space, with our configuration over there, we certainly can. I don't think there's a lack of space in order to do it. We just have to figure out what way to do it. We might have one drive-through for registration and then weave people back through, something like that. So, it's just logistical stuff.
Doctor, with regards to the Pfizer, do we have the capability needed to hold up based on volume that's coming because of its unique temperature requirements?
Yes, yeah. So, the hospital actually houses all of the Pfizer vaccine coming in the county, so we have a partnership with them. They keep it in the ultra-low storage, ultra-low freezer temperatures. And so, we pull it out when we're getting very close to a Pfizer clinic. Cara Herr, the pharmacist over there, is wonderful at keeping track of those very specific details. And so, then when we're having a clinic, she pulls them out, we use them. We try not to waste any doses. So, that is our biggest effort here in this county, is that we try to coordinate so that there's not going to be any wastage. And that's really the way that things have been going. If the ACIP also allows for lower standards for temperature storage, then we might be able to facilitate getting it, like I said, into pediatricians' offices or family doctors' offices, where they can sort of have it for a couple of weeks in regular freezer storage, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, I noticed over the weekend a pop-up testing site in Giant Shopping Center.
Yes, so.
Did I just notice that or has that been there a while? And how's that work?
So, the state has offered, and we can't reject it, pop-up testing sites. So, there's going to be one this week here, and then there's going to be one up in the beach area. Those are run by the state and those are just testing options that people can have.
So, you just drive up and get a test?
Apparently. So, there's no specific guidelines that we know of, that they are requiring in terms of like symptomatic versus not symptomatic. I will remind everyone that if they have a provider in this community, all of the providers have been, have rapid testing capabilities. And PCR testing has not been an issue since the very early days of COVID. So, we have ample supply for testing. Doctors can send that off. The turnaround time generally these days is about two days. So, you can get your results back pretty quickly.
So, we have to get CMR to help get the message out that those sites and times?
Sure.
When they can drive up?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can put that out there, for sure.
I know from recent experience, the testing sites drive in, no appointment, test, and get your results in 15 minutes.
Yes, yeah, and the one here in Prince Frederick Urgent Care has been running seamlessly, basically this entire time for rapid testing, which is wonderful. You do have to pre-register for those. So, I don't know the specifics about the one that the state's running, but I can look into that.
But you have to have some symptoms to do urgent care, don't you?
You don't, no. You can do it for, if you're going for a colonoscopy, if you're going to travel, you can get the test done for really any reason. Yeah, if you've been around someone who is, you know, positive, so.
Well, hopefully, the governor of Virginia announced that if the trend stays the same, June 15, all restrictions will be lifted. And yesterday, the mayor of DC said June 11. So, we're hoping Hogan will be out soon with a date that we can all look forward to.
Yes, and similarly, we discussed that at the local health officer call as well. So, we're hoping, fingers crossed. If it stays this way, that's a great, great sign of things to come.
Get life back to normal.
The bumper sticker.
What the new normal's gonna be, right?
The bumper stickers, we need to make one, right?
Yeah, I told you, we need shirts. Mike's been pushing shirts for weeks.
I have a cricket machine, but I don't know that you really want me to go to town using that thing.
We can, we can start a partnership here.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
So, next week, we're gonna have Dr. Polsky back with us?
I believe so, unless, you know, he says, no, I bow out, but no, I think he'll be back.
If the numbers aren't going down, he better stay with us.
Then he's on the hook.
Right. Because every week you've been here, the numbers have been going down. So, if there's some change in trend, you know, we're gonna...
Very good. Yeah, I hope not, I hope not, yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Have a great day.
You too, thank you.
So, now we'll move on to proclamations. The first one is National Safe Boating Week. Commissioner Wiens?
Yes. Do we have any representatives?
We should.
From? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm right up. Yeah, you may have to recelerate that. Is that okay?
I'm sorry. Logistics, logistics, my bad.
Well, hello. Whereas National Safe Boating Week is May 22 through the 28, 2020. And as the season approaches, we support the North American Safe Boating Campaign, spreading the message of safe and responsible boating. And whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and we are fortunate to have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. At times, however, our waterways have become crowded and could be a place of chaos and confusion. While being a marvelous source of recreation, boating to the unprepared can be a risky sport, not knowing or obeying the nautical rules of the road. For example, choosing not to wear your life jacket or drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat are examples of human error or lack of proper judgment. And whereas, on average, many people lose their lives each year in boating-related accidents in the United States. The vast majority of these fatalities are caused by human error or poor judgment, not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. The simple task of wearing a life jacket has the potential to reduce these terrible losses. Today's life jackets are more comfortable, attractive, and wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. And whereas, knowledge and skills are essential in reducing human error and improvement, improving judgment. Once people are aware of the risks, they are likely to take precautionary measures to protect themselves, their friends, and their family. This is why the message of boating safety is not only crucial during National Safe Boating Week, but throughout the year. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of May 22 through the 28, 2021, be known as National Safe Boating Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we advocate year-round efforts to promote safe boating and urge all those who vote to wear it and practice safe... That was with pronouncing, I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Wear it and practice safe, smart boating habits, given under our hands and seal this 11th day of May, 2021. Could I hear an applause? Would you like to center us, Kevin?
Maybe we need T-shirts that say, "Wear it." You can, we can go down. Yeah, we'll go down.
Ms. Cosgrove, if you will say a word, a few words after or before, or, yes. After's good.
Okay, let's scoot in a little bit, everybody. Good? That is good, there we go. One, two. Cool. Thank you. Do you have shirts that say, "Wear it"?
Yes. And thank you all for coming in today. And it's, absolutely, it's a pleasure seeing you both in person, rather than, yes.
We're supposed to go as a volunteer member of Team Coast Guard. We teach safe boating classes, we do vessel safety checks, we are, excuse me, we check your, where we check your boat for safety equipment so that you know that you have everything in safety equipment that is required by the federal government and the state of Maryland. If you want a vessel safety check, you can contact this gentleman to my left, Bill Smith, and I can make his phone number available. We do operational patrols for safety, regatta and marine patrols. We also provide boating safety literature in marine offices, restaurants, where it's accessible to the public. As you could tell from the way they've stressed, "Wear it," life jackets is our main theme for National Safe Boating Week and all year round, because that's where most of the fatalities happen. You don't expect to go overboard, you don't have your life jacket on, you can't get to it. That's where our fatalities are. Also, there's a new federal law about kill switches that if you own a boat, you really need to look into. It's a device that clips to your keys, which goes in your ignition. The other end clips onto you, your life jacket, wherever. So, if you fall overboard, that key comes out of the ignition, the boat stops instead of circling around you and maybe hitting you with the propeller. And that's a federal requirement. We also are always looking for members, so you can contact Harry Scott for that and I can also make his phone number available. Bill, we'd like you to present the packages. We've put together some packages with whistles and pens and Crisbees and other literature for all of the commissioners. And I thank you for the proclamation.
I thought we were supposed to get a... That's in the parking lot. I thought it was gonna blow up, babe. I thought the "Wear it" shirt would be...
Thank you, young lady. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Oops. That's all right, you can knock it down.
Thank you very much.
So, we do want to thank all the wonderful volunteers with the Coast Guard Auxiliary for all the good work that they do. And I want to make sure our citizens, you know, have a safe and enjoyable summer on their boats this year, so. Next item on the agenda, proclamation is Emergency Medical Services Week. Commissioner McOnkey?
Yes, do we have any representatives here?
We do.
Come on up. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, I have a proclamation here to read. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, the members of the emergency medical services team serving Calver County are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the emergency medical service, service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, and emergency physicians. Calver County Fire Rescue EMS first responders have provided volunteer services to the county for over 90 years. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance, enhance their lifesaving skills. Residents of Calver County benefit daily from the knowledge and the skills of these highly-trained individuals. And whereas the unwavering response to emergency calls, performing lifesaving skills under stress and providing patient care in intense situations does not end when the shift does. EMS is also community care that takes time, energy, and heart far beyond the scope of everyday calling. This is EMS caring for our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of May 16 through the 22, 2021, be known as Emergency Medical Services Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of all Calver County is hereby extended to all Calver County Career EMS Division providers who go beyond the call every day to create positive change in their communities with a direct, long-lasting impact, given under our hands and seal this 11th day of May, 2021.
given under our hands and seal this eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-one.
I guess that's the official, the official thing. That's the, wait for the virtual high fives and all that, you know.
Take care. Hey, Jeff, how are you? Thank you.
I have, I have, yes. You guys take care.
So just want to take this opportunity to thank all the wonderful volunteers that we have out here in the county, providing thousands of calls every year for, provide medical services to our citizens and great quality, uh, staff that we have. So, uh, thank you all very much for what you do. So next on the agenda is public hearings. We have five. The first is Department of Human Resources, Commissioner Hart. And, yeah. And Director Woodson, I'm gonna let you take control of this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Melanie Woodson, Director of Human Resources. I will be reading three public hearing memos. The first public hearing, Department of Human Resources Employee, Employees Retirement Savings Plan Amendment, Disability Definition. Background: On Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners authorized staff to advertise a public hearing proposing to amend the employees' retirement savings plan to change the definition of total and permanent disability to state: "Total and permanent disability means a participant is awarded Social Security disability benefits." Currently, the county does not, the county uses the determination made by the long-term disability provider to approve a member as disabled. The definition of disability is used by the provider is not the same as the definition provided by the plan. During the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Trustees Meeting, the trustees for the employees' retirement savings plan approved an amendment that changes the definition of disability. Plan attorneys Miles and Stockbridge have drafted the amendment. The public hearing was advertised in one paper of general circulation for two consecutive weeks. Fiscal impact? No fiscal impact. Conclusion, recommendation: After receiving any public comment, the record should be closed. Staff will bring the ordinance back to the B O C C for action after the required ten-day waiting period.
So if I may, Commissioners, John Norris County Attorney. There are five public hearings scheduled for today, and all five public hearings were duly advertised. Citizens were given the phone number to call in, and when we checked that phone number earlier, there were three other callers on the line. So we're asking now that those who wish to speak, wait for the public hearing which they wish to speak. After the presentation that was just concluded by Ms. Woodson for the first public hearing, we're asking anybody who would like to comment for this public hearing to please press star nine on their phone. They'll be identified by the last four digits of their phone number, and they can unmute themselves by pressing star six. So anybody that wishes to speak at this public hearing, please press star nine.
There are no speakers.
So with that, the board's in, in perfect procedural posture to accept staff's recommendation that you close the record and let staff return within two weeks after ten days, uh, for a decision.
Mr. President, just a comment. Director, as we discussed at length there yesterday, we really need to be, uh, consistent in how we apply these terms of disability. And I realize this is being applied to one thing, but it runs throughout, uh, discussions and other elements of the law when we talk about disabilities. And we've got three terms out there. This one using total and permanent. Uh, we've got another one that uses total severe, and another one that simply uses total disability. So as we go through any personnel, uh, laws, I, I think it's important to try to get some consistency in what term we're gonna use. And obviously, this looks like the term, the most appropriate one to use is a total and permanent.
Yes, Commissioner, and we certainly can get all three of those definitions on one of the trustees' meetings for discussion by the board.
That'd be great. I think that's important, and it relates back to an earlier discussion probably about a year ago with regards to, uh, tax credit for, uh, real estate, uh, homes, and whether a person is permanently disabled, disabled, or totally disabled, or receiving Social Security or not receiving Social Security. So this will really help us across even some other factors.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we close the record and, and task staff with bringing back the ordinance for action after the required ten-day waiting period.
A second, Mr. President.
Have a motion in a second that we, uh, close the record and request staff to bring back the ordinance in ten, the required ten days. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five oh. Director Woodson, I believe you have the next public hearing, too.
I do. Public hearing number two. Department of Human Resources, Employees Retirement Savings Plan Amendment, Normal Retirement Date Definition. On Tuesday, April thirteenth, the Board of County Commissioners authorized to advertise a public hearing proposing to amend the employees' retirement savings plan to change the definition of normal retirement to the rule of eighty and at least fifty-five years of age and ten years of service. The rule of eighty is reached when the participant's age and years of service equal eighty. When a plan participant reaches their normal retirement date, they are eligible for retiree insurance. Plan attorney Miles and Stockbridge have drafted the amendment. The public hearing was advertised in one paper of general circulation for two consecutive weeks. Fiscal impact: Under the current definition of normal retirement date, forty-two plan participants qualify. Adopting the rule of eighty would result in ten additional plan participants reaching the normal retirement date. Bolton Partners estimates the increase in the actuarial determined contribution to be two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Conclusion, recommendation: After receiving public comment, the record should be closed. Staff will bring the ordinance back to the B O C C for action after the ten-day waiting period.
So again, if anybody wishes to comment on this public hearing, please press star nine to raise your hand. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There are no speakers.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, a move, uh, to, uh, close the record and bring the ordinance back to the board for action after the ten-day waiting period.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to, uh, close the record and request staff to bring back the ordinance for action after the required ten-day waiting period. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five oh. Director Woodson, I believe you have the next one.
Public hearing number three, Department of Human Resources, Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Amendment, Service Time calculation. On Tuesday, April thirteenth, the Board of County Commissioners authorized staff to advertise a public hearing proposing to amend the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan to change the calculation of years of serv-, uh, to change the calculation of years of service. The calculation is divided into two separate definitions: Benefit Eligibility and Service Time. Benefit Eligibility Service will be used to calculate the participant's retirement benefit and does not include unpaid absences. Service Time calculates when the participant is eligible to retire based on their date of hire and does not include unpaid absences. Discussion: The current calculation for years of service includes both Benefit Eligibility Time and Accrued Service Time. Accrued Service Time does not include unpaid absences, which causes a shift in the normal retirement date. Our actuary, Bolton Partners, recommended this change. During the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Trustees Meeting, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Trustees Meeting, the trustees for the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan approved an amendment to allow the changes to service time calculations. Bolton Partners drafted the attached amendment, and Plan Attorney Miles and Stockbridge have vetted the document for legal sufficiency. This public hearing was advertised in one paper of general circulation for two consecutive weeks. Fiscal impact? No fiscal impact. Conclusion, recommendation: After receiving public comment, the record should be closed. Staff will bring the ordinance back to the B O C C for action after the ten-day waiting period.
Just confirm, there's still three folks on the telephone call, so if any of those three would like to speak during this public hearing, please press star nine and you'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There are no speakers.
Mr. President, I have a.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hart?
Director would, um, on page four of the ordinance, uh, under A, small v for five, would you, a stylistic change, not substantive, would you change policeman to police officer?
Change policeman to police officer.
Officer.
We'll just confirm that that's not a defined term elsewhere within the plan by speaking with plan attorneys, but if it's, if it has no substantive effect, we'd be happy.
Strictly stylistic.
Yes.
Okay, we'll confirm with the plan attorney and then make the change.
I guess that's because it could be a policewoman, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the record be closed and have staff bring the ordinance back to the Board of County Commissioners for action after the ten-day waiting period.
Second? Have a motion in a second to close the record and that we require staff to bring back the ordinance after the required ten-day waiting period. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five oh. I believe you're done, Director Woodson.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next public hearing on the list, uh, public hearing number four, Department of Economic Development?
Good morning, Commissioners, Kelly Lee Richardson-Slegel, uh, Director of Rebecca Economic Development. And I will, uh, read the memo for Budget Adjustment, uh, two thirty-three. Background: Earlier this fiscal year, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Calver County Two Thousand and Twenty Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund and the Governor's COVID-nineteen Relief Fund Grant Agreements to aid food service establishments, local accommodations, and business, businesses doing online sales within the county that have been negative, negatively impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The Maryland Department of Commerce approved the grant agreements awarding one million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars from the Two Thousand and Twenty Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund and five hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents from the Governor's Relief Fund to Calver County. Due to the amount of grant funding involved, a public hearing and resolution are required by, by the Board of County Commissioners under Section five dash one oh three of the Code of Public Laws of Calver County. Discussion: The Maryland Department of Commerce has awarded Calver County Government one million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars from the Two Thousand and Twenty Maryland Economic Development Assistance Fund and five hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents from the Governor's Relief Fund to aid food service establishments and local accommodations, as well as businesses doing online sales within the county that have been negatively impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. As outlined in Budget Adjustment, BA one, or excuse me, BA two thirty-three, a budget adjustment is necessary to account for the one million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents from the Maryland Department of Commerce. The Resolution and Budget Adjustment, two thirty-three, has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the County Attorney's Office. Notice of the public hearing to be held on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one was posted in the recorder and the Southern Maryland Voice for two consecutive weeks before this hearing. Fiscal impact: One million, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, excuse me, one million, eight hundred and twenty-nine, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, positive fiscal impact. Conclusion, recommendation: Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the budget adjustment, BA two thirty-three, for one million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, and adopt the resolution.
Again, the floor has been open for public comment on this hearing. If you wish to speak, please press star nine, and you will be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There are no speakers.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we close the record and adopt the resolution approving and adopting Budget Adjustment, BA number two, three, three.
Second, Mr. President?
Have motion in a second that, uh, we close the record and adopt the resolution approving and adopting Budget Adjustment, BA two, three, three. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five oh. The next public hearing, number five, Department of Human Resources?
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Jaclyn Culver, and I'm the Community Resources Specialist in the Community Resources Department. I'm here today to read the memo and accept any comments and questions on BA two, six, three. Background: Calver County Government was invited by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D, to apply for a one million, eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight in Emergency Rental Assistance Program, E-RAP funds, to aid Calver County households with emergency rental assistance and related housing stability services. On April first, two thousand and twenty-one, the Department of Community Resources submitted Calver County's application for this funding. The associated grant agreements and budget adjustment documents are presented to the Board of County Commissioners, B O C C, for review and discussion at this time. Due to the amount of grant funding involved, a public hearing and resolution are required by the B O C C under Section five dash one oh three of the Code of Public Local Laws of Calver County. Discussion: The Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development has awarded Calver County Government up to one million, eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for emergency rental assistance to eligible households. As outlined in Budget Adjustment, number two, sixty-three, to expend the grant funds, a budget adjustment is necessary to account for the estimated one million, eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars from D H C D for the E-RAP grant. BA number two, six, three, has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the County Attorney's Office. Notice of the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland News and the Southern Maryland Voice for two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing. The attached grant agreements are required by D H C D for the grantee, County Commissioners of Calver County, and all associated sub-grantees who serve households applying for assistance. Fiscal impact: None. No match is required. The county provides in-kind administrative support for this project. Conclusions and recommendations: The Department of Community Resources requests that the B O C C authorize the board president to sign the attached grant agreements. In addition, the Department of Community Resources requests that the B O C C hold a public hearing, accept public comment, move to close the record, and adopt the resolution enacting Budget Adjustment, BA number two, six, three. This was coordinated through the Department of Finance and Budget and the Office of the County Attorney. And before we open up the public comment, I just want to give a huge thank you to the County Attorney's Office, Rachel in your office, and, um, Finance and Budget, especially Mary Lehman, for helping me move this on so quickly. We had about one week to pull this all together, and it was a quick review, and so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if there is, uh, anyone still on the line that wishes to comment during this public hearing, we're gonna ask them to press star nine now.
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Moved to close the record and adopt resolution, enacting budget adjustment B A number two six three.
Second.
Have- Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, do we also have to approve and authorize the board president to sign the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Grant Application? That's all part of the motion.
That's correct.
All right, thank you, thank you.
So I have a motion that, in a second, that we approve and authorize the board president to sign the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Grant Applications and close the record and adopt the resolution approving and adopting budget adjustment number B A two six three. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Director Vasallo.
Good morning Commissioners, Linda Vasallo, you have one appointment today for the Calver County Ethics Commission. You have a recommendation from the Ethics Commission to reappoint Wayne Mallett.
Move to approve.
Second, Mr. President.
I have a motion in a second to reappoint Wayne Mallett. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four one.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make, like to make a motion to accept Lisa R. Scott as the Ethics Commission alternate, Mel Powell, District One, as a regular member, and Brian Fairweather, District Two, for the Ethics Commission. Got a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm making myself notes. So I have a motion to appoint Lisa R. Scott as the alternate, Mel Powell, District One, and Brian Fairweather, District Two. Uh, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Thank you. Uh, next item on is the consent agenda. We have two items, Department of Planning and Zoning, a joint recertification application of T D Rs for A P D zero zero dash one two and A P D zero three dash one four. Uh, the second item under consent is Department of Public Safety, Extension of Local State of Emergency. Are there any objections to the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will be adopted. Next is public comment.
So last check, there were still three people on the line, so we're asking anybody that wishes to make public comment to please press star nine. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number. You can press star six to unmute yourself. Please identify yourself by name and address and whether you're speaking as an individual or for a group.
There are no speakers.
All right, thank you. Last item is Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Hitchens?
Mr. President, I have nothing to report this time.
Commissioner Harrow?
I do, and I wanna read something. So Parks and Recs pretty much doesn't get any attention unless somebody's mad, for the most part, you know? So if they're mad, it gets all kinds of attention. In today's world, we just write letters with absolutes and everything. But they do a lot of good stuff over there, they really do, and it, and it, and I just want you to take a second with, and and look at the COVID structure out there where that's been the only thing is to get outside and try to enjoy this. And they've had struggles because we, obviously, we have buildings that people like to enjoy, and we've had to make changes. Been hard to to keep employment, like if you look around the rest of the world, but there's something really neat that they did. So they did a little video, and I don't know if y'all saw it, where they took these ducks. Like, man, when a little kid, you know, it was about the only game you could win was those little ducks that was going around, and it was rigged so the kid could win everything. And they did that, and it was to raise money for kids with disabilities to help them attend a summer camp, and they raised seven hundred dollars. And it was a really neat, out-of-the-box thing that they thought of doing that, you know, I really thought needed to be to be brought up, and I know sometimes in the world, we're so mad at everything, from the price of gas to groceries, everything, we're just so mad. But just, just take a second, when you're on the ball fields, when you walk into parks, and you see something that you just think's not up to par, it's, it's not that, that, that the intention and the will's not there. Everybody's really trying their, their best to make the most enjoyable experiences possible, and and these are brand-new times, and I'm not making excuses, I'm not an excuse person. But, but just think about in your workplace, is your workplace perfect a hundred percent of the time? Do you walk into work on Monday and Monday through Friday go, you know what, we're, we're a hundred percent every day? We never make a mistake, we're never nothing. And I just ask you to think about that, when you see the folks out there cutting grass, working, that they're just trying to make a living like everybody else, and they're our folks, right? I mean, we're all, we're all one big community, so just want you to remember that, and and those are just some of the little things they do, and and like, they also have a an event coming up, I'm sorry, we'll get back in there, um, they have a breezy blast off coming this Saturday, and, um, I guess between five and nine uh, tonight or this week, you you register online for it, if I'm saying that right, guys. Um, but it's for this Saturday, so they're always, if you go on their website, they're always trying to do little things that makes it more fun to live here and a better community to live in, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, everybody's driving through Prince Frederick, and they noticed that the, the parking lot at Fox Run Shopping Center is being dug up, and everybody wants to know what's going in there, and I believe you guys have mentioned a Popeyes and a Starbucks, and I know that we're getting a lot of the same things that we have in Dunkirk, but, you know, that, I just want to let the public know that the Commissioners have no control over, you know, what goes in there, so, um, it is what it is, um, I'm sure there'll be a line wrapped around both of them. Around lunchtime at least, but I just wanted to put that information out there.
Is that all?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just wanted to extend my condolences to the friends and family of John Hoffman. Um, good man, uh, who passed a couple of weeks ago. And I wanted to congratulate my uncle, and and we should have him come in, County Administrator. It, you know, I think it would be, uh, worthy of-
Do we have to guess which uncle?
I was gonna say, there's several, can you narrow it down? Thousand. One uncle. Uncle, uh, J T.
Oh, absolutely.
John Thompson.
Absolutely.
Uh, bring him in. Um, we can give him a five-minute minimum speech time to tell us all about his over thirty years of dedicated service to the citizens of Calver County. Um, Mark, would you like to, uh, lose? Yes, would you like to say a few words about?
I, I will say that the, the folks at Fleet Maintenance did give, uh, Mr. Thompson a cookout.
Oh, man, we didn't get invited?
Uh, you did not, sir. It was a local event.
It's probably because of Steve.
But I, he, I will speak to him about coming before the Commissioners at the next opportunity.
Be entertaining if nothing else.
It'll be entertaining, for sure.
Good deal.
And I'll put him on a limit.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I do want to apologize, last week it was National Teacher Appreciation Week, and we missed it. Um, but we are working to get those teachers that were recognized for their service this year, get them in one Tuesday and give them a citation, but we, we don't want to overlook our teachers, they're vital, vital, important tool in how we educate our children, and they've had a very stressful year this year with the COVID and circumstances, so, um, we along with them are very much looking forward to normal school next year, so, uh, didn't want to let anybody, want to let everybody know that we haven't forgotten them, but we're gonna get them in next week, or as soon as we can get them on the schedule. Um, and this morning today, in administrative function, we talked about opening up county government. Uh, trends are going in the right direction. Uh, the Governor of Virginia announced this week earlier, if trends continue, he's gonna lift all restrictions June fifteenth. The mayor of the District of Columbia announced that if trends continue, she's gonna open up the district and lift all restrictions on June eleventh. So we anticipate Governor Hogan soon will be making some sort of a statement, but at least now there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And, uh, want to let everybody know that we're gonna try to get county government back up and running the way it was, and, uh, it's great to see events starting to pop up on the calendar, people are starting to schedule stuff for this summer and this fall, and uh, try to get back to some sense of normalcy, um, but we still strongly encourage you to get vaccinated. And just because restrictions are lifted, uh, you know, individuals have their rights to do whatever they want to do, and, uh, there's no requirements that you, uh, can't wear a mask anymore if you so desire, so, uh, just looking forward to that day, especially with summer coming, we, we can get back to, uh, some sort of normalcy. Did you want to say something, Mr.?
Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner President Hans, the, the thing is, is, uh, the Commissioners had directed us to reach out to the teachers anyway, and and the administrative support folks, so we have done that, all we're looking for, the Commissioners, as you're aware, you did send out a press release, but we had to arrange when those individuals could make it to the next event, and I think that's it, it might be the eighteenth, but we're gonna verify that, but we do have the teachers, we're trying to get them to come before you and and the administrative staff that won those awards, that'll be in the near future.
Yeah. We want to get them in, so, I think that's all I have, so entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article subsection three dash zero five B seven, to obtain legal advice.
Second, Mr. President.
Have a motion in a second that we go into executive session, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Everybody have a great day.